The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and execute the minutes for the meeting of April 14, 2015.
Make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Veer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spudler?
Commissioner Claywell?
Morning, Gary.
First item here is one of our service contracts for pump maintenance for the year 2015, $2,000. This is one we will look next year and do in multiple years, but this one started back, finally got it all through, but all the paperwork started a while back and we have to change trying to do multi-year midstream.
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the Board approve and execute a service contract agreement with North Shore Pump and Equipment Company to perform pumping for the year 2015 in an amount not to exceed $2,000.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Veer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spudler?
Aye.
Commissioner Claywell?
The next item was another service contract with Cummins Brideway. This one is a three-year contract. We were able to work that out with them. They'll be doing the maintenance on our backup generators that McFarland did in Parkman in the next three years.
Is that one of those that three-year contract as a result of the conversation we had in the last meeting?
Combination, yeah. We were trying to work that out ahead of time, but as soon as we had that conversation last week, we basically told them it's going to be three years.
Yeah, nice. Things work, huh?
Yeah, but these ones, that type is a little easier to get the contractor to agree to three years because he knows he's going to be doing the work for three years, whereas with some of the other service contractors, they're not guaranteed any work, right, or service contracts, so.
I want to make you aware that all three of your needs to initial on each one of these four sections. And there's two pages. The Department of Water Resources is requesting the Board approve, execute, and initial a service contract agreement with Cummins Brideway to perform three years of planned maintenance for the generators located at the McFarland Creek wastewater treatment plant, the Parkman pump station, and the Parkman wastewater treatment plant for the years 2015, 2016, and 2017 in an amount not to exceed $21,844.79.
Shall move.
Second.
Commissioner Veer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spudler?
Aye.
Commissioner Claywell?
This is part of that, or this is the next one coming up?
This one is the one that you just talked about. This is number four.
And the one we just approved is the one you just said we got this one up?
Yes.
Do me a favor. Get easier contracts.
Detective prosecutor's office.
Kristi, can you set that up? This is a pain in the butt.
Well, yeah, you got, there's four, so.
That's the one that needs initialing now?
Yes, correct. There's blue stickies, and there's four spots, and there's three lines in each spot.
And the reason this needs initialing is because somebody didn't go back and revise the contract, so all we had to do was sign it.
And then you also have to sign the actual regular service contract. That's your prosecutor.
We need a key on the table that if it's a blue one, you initial, and if it's a red one...
If it's yellow, it's all of you, and the red ones are just...
Yeah, we need some kind of a colored key here to follow along.
You need the button down at that end of the thing?
Yeah, here.
We need an overhead camera so you guys can see what we have to do up here. You're sitting there nice and easy, very relaxing.
Sometimes just trying to place the stickies to get them in the right spot is sometimes one of the quirks.
All right. I don't think anybody's going to throw us a pity party.
I'm taking not, but it's worth a shot. Go ahead.
The next item here is a resolution for the ODOT doing work on 306. They're replacing a culvert just north of Beacon Hill in Bainbridge Township. Part of that project is they have to relocate our county forest main that's within the right of way. They're taking the culvert. It's currently on an angle across the road, and they're going to maybe bring it closer to being perpendicular across the road. When they do that, they need to relocate our forest main. It's going to be in the, still in the public right of way, it's just going to be closer to the right of way. Under the agreement with ODOT to have public utilities in their right of way, if they ever need to be relocated as part of a project, we are, whoever the public utility is, is required to pay for the portion of the project that is that relocation. And that's what this resolution is, is just, it's basically saying that we understand we have to, we have to pay for it, and we agree to pay for it. And then there'll be a contract next week that'll be the official contract between the county and ODOT on the, for that cost.
Yeah, there's...
And that's $40,860.
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the Board approve, execute Resolution Number 15-051, final for the relocation of county sanitary forest main as part of the state improvement to replace a culvert located under Chillicothe Road, State Route 306, just north of Beacon Hill Drive in Bainbridge Township.
Make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Veer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spudler?
Aye.
Commissioner Claywell?
Thank you, Jerry. Bye-bye now. You're all fighting.
Okay. I could see if the mic is on. I don't know if it is or not.
All the way toward you.
The thing in the back is on, but I haven't turned it on yet.
Yeah.
My financials, you just have to sign two copies.
Okay.
No initialing. Today's financials, we have revenue certifications for the Auditor's G.O. No Retirement Fund, that's for loan payments for the Engineers Office, the Ohio Development Service Agency loan, and the Core Technology Fund for Ohio Technology Grant Proceeds from the Ohio Supreme Court. If cash transfers out of the general fund for a portion of 2015 funding for the CASA program and for quarterly gas well proceeds for the Board of DD. Purchase order for the Treasury of State for the relocation of sanitary forest main project for the Department of Water Resources in the amount of $40,860. Travel request for the Common Police Court probation department. Second quarter 2015 payment to the OSU Extension Office in the amount of $68,566.25. Payment to GEOCom Incorporated for the annual software maintenance contract for the Sheriff's 911 GIS mapping program in the amount of $10,905. And a payment to Abraham Kanter for legal services for the Giganaut Court for a period of January 27, 2015 through February 19, 2015, in the amount of $7,612.50.
And that GIS, that's to who for the mapping program?
GEOCom.
But, and that's for what?
It's for the GIS and the 911 program.
Okay, so on that, because I'll tell you, I don't know what's going on with the GIS that you go to do the property search on.
REA link?
I guess that, through the auditor.
But, I mean, it's terrible. We've gone actually backwards. I mean, I don't know what the Auditor's Office did with that, but it's terrible.
Yeah, they retired Access JOGA, and there may have been, there may have been software that was no longer supported or something that replaced it.
It's Real Link, right? That's the new...
Yeah, Real Link. It's terrible. You go on there and you try to track properties or look at properties the way that it used to be and what it is now, it's, I mean, we've gone backwards. As far as I'm concerned, it's terrible. It's the hardest thing to work with. I, I mean, it's ridiculous.
You know, they've done some training. I know they trained some Realtors on it, but, you know.
Yeah.
I was up hooking around the other day. I agree with Raoul. I mean, it's much more cumbersome than the old system, and, I mean, I'm a computer guy, and it's not hard to use from an overall conceptual standpoint.
I think it requires more bandwidth to operate, because when I talk to folks up on the square where they're right by it, it seems, and I actually saw it, it seems to run pretty well when you're right by it, but if you're coming in remotely, it's taking forever for those maps to...
Yeah, I talked to a surveyor the other day, and he goes, what, he says, "What did you guys do to your system?" And I was like, we, you know, I said, "You're not the first one that's complained about this, and it's, it's bad."
Yeah.
So, okay. So, I was going to say, if we were putting money into that...
That's right. I was going to say no today because it's gone really backwards.
On the financials, that one that's the $40,860, that's the thing that we just talked about there. And then that, that one for the juvenile court, the legal, it says legal fees here for commissioners. Which case is that? Do you know?
That's the Nancy McCarthy.
Well, that's the attorney that's doing the judge against Nancy McCarthy. Is that the first bill, or we already paid one, didn't we?
That's the second bill.
That's the second. And what are we up, around $12,000 on that now?
That's what that, yes.
Okay, I got to make a motion.
Second.
Commissioner Veer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spudler?
Aye.
Commissioner Claywell?
Aye.
That's not yours. Morning.
That's back off.
How are you? How you feeling?
I pulled my back out on Saturday, so...
You're going to get back to us on that? How you feeling?
Good morning. Well, we were surprised Becky Samard, she put in her retirement notice, so we're very happy for her, but we're going to miss all the hard work that she has done at the Department on Aging. She is our site coordinator at the Sharden Center, so to accept her retirement as of June 19.
The Department on Aging is requesting the Board accept the retirement resignation of Rebecca Samard, site coordinator, to be effective June 19, 2015.
Make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Veer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spudler?
Aye.
And then we'd like to post her position for internal and external candidates. The Department on Aging is requesting the Board grant permission to advertise for the position of site coordinator number 1004. This position will remain posted until filled.
Move.
Second.
Commissioner Veer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spudler?
Aye.
Commissioner Claywell?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica.
Good morning.
Good morning.
May I ask for a few hours on Friday? If I'd known last week, I would have combined them, but I didn't know. Hope it's not a job search.
That same thing was going through my head.
I really value the skills he brings to us, and I would be really sad if we lost him, but it is an unpaid leave, as he doesn't qualify for using vacation yet. He hasn't been here for a year yet.
The Archives and Records Center is requesting the Board approve an unpaid leave of absence for Matthew Murphy on Friday, April 24, 2015.
Shall move.
Second.
Commissioner Veer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spudler?
Aye.
Commissioner Claywell?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hot seat for you.
Morning. How are you, Kelly?
Good, how are you? The first one is the programmatic agreement for OHPO and the county. I think I can explain this in an easy way. What this allows us to do, no matter what projects we do, whether it's a building for a loan or a building for our allocation grant, example Burton Agent Hall, it's less than 50 years old. This agreement allows us to just send a letter to OHPO saying there's no significant historic preservation or historic significance with this building because it is younger than 50 years old. If we did not have this programmatic agreement, we'd have to do a 21-page report on every project that we do. So that's basically what it is. We would do this every three to four years. There's been no change in the agreement since the last agreement that we've had. If we do have a building that's over 50 years old, it allows us, instead of doing that 21-page report, we submit topos, pictures of the building, tell what the project is. We're replacing windows in this, you know, it's meant for private rehab more than the projects that we do. We don't do much private rehab. We don't do any private rehab anymore. So it just kind of lets us not do that 21-page report anymore. We could just submit photos and a letter, and basically, you know, they are saying, "Okay, we believe you, you know, there's the site," or whatever. You don't have to do the 21-page report. No matter what, we have to submit something to OHPO when it comes to a building.
It'd be interesting to have a conversation at some point in time on how much time and effort and resources we expend on HUD grants, just complying with all the things you have to comply with.
Well, the county gets money from HUD all over the place, you know, not just our office, and you have to remember that whenever you...
I just had a conversation with another commissioner, I'll leave the name of the county out, and it was actually his attorney, had said to me that they're pulling out of all, anything having to do with HUD grants.
Wow.
Because the requirements are so stringent on the HUD grants, they're just not going to have anything to do with it anymore. So I thought I'd set up a meeting with Anita and these guys, and let her have a conversation.
I think a lot of that comes from, like I said, the private sector, the private rehab, which we really have gotten away from doing. We don't do our home fire assistance and rehab programs anymore, anything like that. I think that's where a lot of those strict guidelines come in, with our P grant that we did. That was a nightmare. And we don't really do that anymore.
Yeah, that's kind of abusive, actually, in an organization, so. But you guys do a real good job of managing that.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the Board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the programmatic agreement for coordination between Joga County and New House State Historic Preservation Office for the administration of programs using hard allocated funds with delegated responsibilities authorized under 24 CFR Part 58, court period January 1, 2015 through December 31, 2019.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Veer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spudler?
Aye.
Commissioner Claywell?
Aye.
The next one is, we're asking for a change order to extend the data configuration for the architect for the Thompson Township Community Center. The architect is Deese Serrato, and time's just got pushed back because of the construction and everything going on up at Thompson, so he needed a little bit more time to finish up the plans.
The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the Board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute change order number one, extending the date for completion to provide architectural plans by 14 calendar days for the interior rehabilitation of the Thompson Township Community Center under program income and allocation funding.
Shall move.
Second.
Commissioner Veer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spudler?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did it warm up there yet?
No.
Good morning.
Morning.
How are you?
Good.
Beginning of a long list of engineering topics. The first one on here is to release the 33% reduction of the limit on all county township roads as, you know, frost has finally released from the grounds. You're sure?
Yeah, I watched the weather. I thought it's coming back.
Well, that doesn't mean it's going to get that deep anymore. You know, this is effective May 1, so it's time to let the trucks, you know, do what they can do without causing any more damage.
The County Engineers Office is requesting the Board release the 33% low limit reduction on all county highways and township roads to be effective May 1, 2015.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Veer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spudler?
Aye.
Commissioner Claywell?
I just had an interesting call from somebody in California asking me about ultra-density concrete and why our county engineers not using ultra-density concrete.
Ultra-density concrete.
Yeah, so you can put it down in his last 50 years, and we don't have to ever have to worry about it again, so.
This guy's from California?
Yeah. I'll come over and talk to Joe about that, see if he knows anything about ultra-density. Oh, and they got a new technology called solar roads now.
Solar roads.
Coming from California.
Nice.
And I know I've got a lot of confidence in that coming. Let's go ahead.
All right, this next one is to sign to approve and execute the unit price contract with Ronic Paving for the resurfacing of Rapids Road.
The County Engineers Office is requesting the Board approve and execute the unit price contract with Ronic Paving Incorporated for the asphalt resurfacing of Rapids Road, CH1, Sections D through F in Burton and Troy Townships in the amount of $887,314.50.
Make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Veer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spudler?
Aye.
Commissioner Claywell?
Aye.
Thank you.
Were you tag teaming us today?
Yes, we are. We're getting our timing in front of it.
Oh. Morning, Shane. Morning, Shane.
Bobby signing, I say thank you. The concrete's weak. The cone is still there.
We have on the agenda today Burton Windsor Road, County Highway 14, Sections F and G. This is Ohio Public Works funded project, 2.55 miles, resurfacing. The total cost is estimated at $700,000, and the maximum grant is $288,000. We're looking to get the Board's final approval and put these out to bid.
The County Engineers Office is requesting the Board approve and execute Resolution Number 15-046 to order the improvement of Burton Windsor Road, CH14, Sections F and G in Huntsburg Township. This resolution also requests the Board approve and execute the title sheet for the specifications for the same. Further, this resolution sets a bid opening on Wednesday, May 13, 2015, at 2:00 PM. Notice of this bid opening will be advertised on April 23, 2015, and on the county website.
Shall move.
Second.
Commissioner Veer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spudler?
Aye.
Commissioner Claywell?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item is for Thwane Road, County Highway 27, Sections A and B, in Sheridan and Munson Townships. This is a 2.88-mile resurfacing road, estimated cost of $625,000. It also is Ohio Public Works grant funding of $243,000, and we're looking for final plan approval and authorization to put this out to bid.
The County Engineers Office is requesting the Board approve and execute Resolution Number 15-047 to order the improvement of Thwane Road, CH27, Sections A and B in Sheridan and Munson Township. This resolution also requests the Board approve and execute the title sheet for the specifications for the same. Further, this resolution sets a bid opening on Wednesday, May 13, 2015, at 2:05 PM. Notice of this bid opening will be advertised on April 23, 2015, and on the county website.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Veer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spudler?
Aye.
Commissioner Claywell?
Shane, on that Burton Windsor, that's going to start at 5:28? Yes. Okay. And then go east? Yeah, all the way to Huntsburg. Okay. The third item for my agenda here is for the restriping, application of permanent pavement markings for 110 miles of county highways. The, and that'll include center line, edge line, and some channelizing line. The total estimated cost is $218,000, and that would all be local funding.
So what does that break down to a mile?
Uh, 218. Yeah, it's about 2,000 a mile, roughly, with all the striping that's involved.
And we'll get about how long out of that?
We're getting about three years on average. Some of the heavier traveled roads, they're getting done every other year, and a few even are getting it every year.
Yes.
Between the cars and the piles, it's getting banged up pretty good out there.
Sure, yeah.
If you just have a winter without snow.
Good luck with that.
Get those solar roads.
Buy some of that California concrete then.
Right, exactly.
Can I make the difference with that? Because that's both of them.
Oh, yeah.
15 and 16 is what...
Yeah, we're actually submitting both the first and second resolution on this, so we're getting your authorization to improve and order back to back.
The County Engineers Office is requesting the Board approve and execute Resolution Number 15-048 to improve various sections of county roads by applying pavement markings for the year 2015. The County Engineers Office is requesting the Board approve and execute Resolution Number 15-049 to order the improvement of various sections of county roads by applying pavement markings for the year 2015. This resolution also requests the Board approve and execute the title sheet for the specifications for the same. Further, this resolution sets a bid opening on Wednesday, May 13, 2015, at 2:10 PM. Notice of this bid opening will be advertised on April 23, 2015, and on the county website.
So we're doing 15 and 16?
15 and 16 together.
All right, I'll make those motions.
Second.
Commissioner Veer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spudler?
Aye.
Commissioner Claywell?
Aye.
Thank you. Finally, the County Engineers Office is requesting the Board approve the plans to replace two wooden timber box bridges on Heath Road. These bridges are, at the end of their life cycle, we're proposing to replace them with precast concrete boxes. Both are north of Wilson Mills, before they leave the county.
Wooden box bridges?
Mm-hmm. Similar to what was replaced last year on Fowler's Mill, three-sided wooden boxes.
How long does a wooden box bridge last?
They're 50 years old.
Really?
Yeah.
That's surprising.
Yeah. And the last few that we've replaced from the, from the inside of the bridge where the water flows, they look in decent shape. As soon as we peel that back, the part that's against the herts is showing pretty advanced stages of rot, so...
But were those made, I mean, they're made out of wood, but they're 50 years old. They didn't have the treated wood we have now, did they?
They did have...
They had creosote or something, right?
Something like that, yes.
We don't want to talk about what's going in the environment from those.
The debris will be disposed of in a lawful manner.
There you go.
The County Engineers Office is requesting the Board approve and execute Resolution Number 15-050 to order the reconstruction of the Heath Road Bridges Structures Number 105-5.02 and 105-5.20 in Chesapeake Township. This resolution also requests the Board approve and execute the title sheet for the specifications for the same. Further, this resolution sets a bid opening on Wednesday, May 13, 2015, at 2:15 PM. Notice of this bid opening will be advertised on April 23, 2015, and on the county website.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Veer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spudler?
Aye.
Commissioner Claywell?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Good day, Ann.
Bye-bye now.
Morning.
Morning. We have to drag up the chair from there, or...
I'm great, thank you.
How you doing, Joanna?
Good morning.
Hello.
This morning, we're asking the Commissioners to approve on the Court Information Technology Department to advertise for a legal notice for an RFP for filing.
Who else is using, the other courts are using it already, aren't they?
Many of the other courts. The federal courts are already using them. I know Supreme Court is moving in that direction, but some of the other courts are moving in that direction from the county perspective.
Is this going to make your jobs easier and everything?
It definitely has an impact on the clerk's office, as well as the speed that things go through the courthouse as far as moving into the justice itself.
I know with jobs and family services, the state mandated computer systems are a pain in the butt, so is this going to be better for you guys or make more work?
This isn't state mandated, so it's actually something that we've been looking at, that
hiring system e-services, with the sealed proposals to be opened on Wednesday, May thirteenth, two thousand fifteen, at three o'clock P. M. Notice of this request for competitive sealed proposals will be advertised on April twenty-third, two thousand fifteen, and on the county website.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Flippel?
Aye.
Commissioner Flippel?
I do have another question before I go.
Aye.
So who's gonna maintain the system? Is this maintained by you guys, or maintained by the Gis guys?
No, we maintain that system.
You maintain yourself?
Right.
And you have staff to do that, and all that kind of stuff?
Absolutely.
We are the staff. You are the staff. Oh, right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to see the system, by the way. On a computer, by the way, back where my curiosity always gets to. Morning, Chief.
Good morning.
I will.
On your phone.
This is just, we had Mike retiring, so this is gonna fill his position for all the time.
And this is senior trades mechanic, which would be what, what would he be doing?
He'd be doing the basic maintenance stuff, all the maintenance stuff, plus with the senior maintenance, he's in charge of one or two guys, right on everything. Like, here, we have two guys, so we try to do like a maintenance one, maintenance two, and maintenance three.
So it's not like an automobile mechanic?
Correct.
Yeah, that's threw me a little bit, nomenclature there. He's a mechanic, he's a maintenance person.
Correct. He's a mechanic for the HPA C outs and stuff.
Okay.
Okay.
The maintenance department is requesting the board grant permission to advertise for the position of senior trades mechanic number nineteen-oh-five. This position will remain posted until filled.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Flippel?
Aye.
Commissioner Flippel?
Thank you, Glenn. Bye-bye, now.
I am subbing for Mike Casper this morning, this next one. Mr. Bevan was still in his probationary period, and he's determined that being a transit driver is not really something he wants to do long-term, so he submitted his resignation.
Okay.
The transit department is requesting the board grant permission to advertise for the position of senior trades mechanic number nineteen-oh-five. This position will remain posted until filled.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Flippel?
Aye.
Commissioner Flippel?
Aye.
Thank you, Glenn. Bye-bye, now.
Take care.
I am subbing for Mike Casper this morning, this next one. Mr. Bevan was still in his probationary period, and he's determined that being a transit driver is not really something he wants to do long-term, so he submitted his resignation.
Okay.
The transit department is requesting the board accept the resignation of Lee and Bevan, part-time driver, to the effective April sixteenth, two thousand fifteen.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Flippel?
Aye.
Commissioner Flippel?
Aye.
Just like a bad penny, I'm back.
She's back.
This next item is a case where an employee, a longtime employee, received a promotion at the county home, and what our policy manual says is when a person is high enough in the steps that the promotion actually causes them to lose money, we make them whole. So they continue to earn that same wage they were making until the end of their probation, and then either they click up to the next step, and it's more money, or we give them at least twenty-five cents an hour more at the end of their probation. In this case, when she gets to the end of her probation, the first step in the new position will be more than twenty-five cents, so it's just a stopgap to make her whole during her probationary period.
The commissioner's office is requesting the board amend the motion from April fourteenth, two thousand fifteen, correcting the rate of pay, and to read and approve the promotion of Wendy Halstrom from State Senior Cook Number Fifteen-oh-seven, to the effective April nineteenth, two thousand fifteen, at a rate of ten dollars and sixty cents per hour. After the successful completion of a one-hundred-and-eighty-day probationary period, the rate will increase to eleven dollars, two cents per hour.
So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Flippel?
Aye.
Commissioner Flippel?
Aye.
Thank you. This next item is just our ordinary summer help. We are going to be working with a summer program, summer youth training program at JFS, for a lot of our summer help this year, and that's gonna be a grant-funded program, so we'll get help without paying for it out of our pockets. But we have a couple departments that would also like to do their ordinary summer help hiring, and so every year, we come to you and ask you to approve that a couple of departments can do this, and to set the rate of pay for it.
They set the rate of pay?
You are setting it right now.
We're setting the rate.
Correct.
Okay. And this is consistent with the other program?
I have not even seen the paperwork for that. I don't know what the pay is, because we will be contracting with a vendor who's gonna actually be doing the paying of the participants in the JFS program, companies called Calos.
We had to adjust ours because the minimum wage changed.
The minimum wage went up, so we had to be sure we were above that, so.
The commissioner's office is requesting the board grant permission to advertise for summer health number zero-one-zero-one for the approximate period of May first, two thousand fifteen, or the end of the school year, through September thirty, two thousand fifteen, or at the start of school, whichever comes first, for a maximum of twenty-one weeks, eight-hundred-and-forty hours to be worked. This posting will remain posted until all positions are filled, with compensation to be set up at eight dollars, twenty-five cents per hour first year, eight dollars, fifty cents second year, and eight dollars, seventy-five cents for the subsequent years.
And we do have some third-year people coming back this year, so I think at the Department on Aging, they're reactivating some summer help at the third-year level. Right now, I'd like to introduce John.
I gotta do a volunteer one.
I gotta, yeah, I gotta make the motion. Yeah. Move.
No, twenty-two.
Twenty-two. Twenty-two, excuse me.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Flippel?
Aye.
Commissioner Flippel?
Aye.
Thank you. Come on up, John.
John is our agent, helps us with our insurance and our policy with Corsa. Number twenty-four is, I'm sorry, number twenty.
Twenty-three.
Good morning, we're doing two of these later.
They're two different things. The first one is our, where we actually agree to participate as members of Corsa, and that's done every three years. I just brought John up in case you have any questions about that. Course has been, how long would you say course has been? It's been a while.
Twenty-five years.
Twenty years, yeah.
Yeah, they've been, that's property casually, it's a self-insurance pool like SEDCO for benefits, and it's been in existence longer in sixty or so counties of the eighty-eight?
Sixty-six, I believe, are in it.
And then there's some other entities like the, I think, the Portage, Georgia Juvenile Joint Detention Centers, they have a lot of entities like that.
So this just outlines our agreement to participate for another three years.
And that payment will cover all three of those years?
No. The next one, number twenty-four, that's a payment for one year, and it's a lot less than it was last year, we'll talk about that in a minute.
Okay.
If that's okay.
Do we wanna do both those at the same time?
We'd already talked about that, but, I mean, let's go ahead and do the first one when we do that, so.
The commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and execute the two thousand fifteen participation agreement with the county risk-sharing authority incorporated Corsa for the period May first, two thousand fifteen, through April thirty, two thousand eighteen.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Flippel?
So now we can prove the amount, now that we've approved that we're gonna use them, so.
I'm gonna let John talk to you a little bit about the program for this year. I will tell you that last year, we paid three-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand, and this year, it's three-hundred-and-forty, so that's good news, and there will be enhanced coverages under that. He and I both attended the Corsa renewal meeting a few weeks ago, and they explained to us that the loss control that we do, and the risk management that we do, the safety programs that we do, are actually resulting in statewide lower claims. And because we're self-insured, then the board gives the money back. They give it back to us in the form of incentives, we jump through some hoops, they give us the incentives. We got a hundred percent of the incentives last year, and my goal is to attain that same level this year, through the various programs that we use.
And we've been, Gary Wertz has been our servicing agent for a long time, John's transitioning in that role, and we met with John and Gary last week, and we were talking about the coverage enhancements, and we asked the question, well, what would it cost to get this kind of coverage, all the things we have in the private sector? And I think Gary was saying, to get this kind of coverage, we'd probably be talking at five-hundred thousand dollars, for the same kind of coverage, if you just went out to an outside agent to get it.
And it wouldn't be the same coverage, it would be less. There's not a company, to my knowledge, a single company, that can incorporate all of the coverages that Corsa has. For example, we might have to get the law enforcement liability from one company, another company might do the general liability of property, a third one, the physician's liability at the jail, incorporate all those things, and still have a policy that's worse, and wouldn't have some of the enhancements that are in this policy. It's been a great, great policy for as long as it's been in existence.
And again, I think the board of directors is comprised of county commissioners, so it's really, it's not run by some outside group, it's folks like you guys.
It's us, so it's very well tailored to the specific needs of county government.
And yeah, so I'm just here to ask that you approve payment of the invoice, and give you a little, a brief, very brief review of the policies and premiums, what makes them up, if I may pass these out, see if we've taken some notes, scribbling down. As you can see, my first note, there's several factors that work into the rate that comes up each year, as the insurance is rated. The total amount of property that's insured, and that's, this is a blanket figure, in four, two thousand fourteen, it was a hundred-and-fifty-three-point-seven million. This upcoming period, it's going to be a hundred-and-sixty-two-point-three million. The total number of employees, both full-time and part-time, part-time are based on full-time equivalent, so they lump those together.
Now, where did we have, not to interrupt, but where did we have the almost a ten-million-dollar jump in the property?
Primarily, a large portion of that was from the auto. Let's see, I can't give you the numbers. In, in your property buildings and equipment, stuff inside, that type of thing, in two thousand fourteen, you were at a hundred-and-fifty-three-point-seven million, and this upcoming year, it's a hundred-and-sixty-two-point-three million. What Corsa does is, every few years, they come out and they do a inspection on the property values, to make sure that all the properties are insured to the right amount for replacement costs. So that just occurred, I believe it was last year, that they came out and did that, and adjusted the property values there. As far as the auto fleet, that went from two-hundred-and-sixty-two units last year to two-hundred-and-eighty-seven units this year, with, let's see, nine million last year, nine-point-three million this year.
Is that primarily, is that in law enforcement, is that in the maintenance, or is it law enforcement?
Primarily law enforcement, but, you know, across the board, we get changes off and on from the engineers department. Bought a bulldozer, did something new.
We had fairly substantial renovation at Metzheim, I'm assuming that would be part of that as well.
Well, I could see that, the million and a half that they did for the, for the ten million.
Yeah, I know what you're, yeah, I know what you're.
I'm struggling with that, to be quite honest. With the ten million dollars, and our vehicles from going from two-sixty-two to two-eighty-seven, that's, that's almost, what, twenty-five new vehicles?
They just have the engineers building on it yet?
Not yet. It could be just reevaluating, some things could be valued higher.
Is there a report that actually shows where they actually showed the increases?
Oh, sure, we can give you a full breakdown.
I'm just saying, ten million dollars, I, you know, we've been flat in Georgia County as far as our property valuations, for what we've got, if anything, it's gone the other way for us than.
Not on replacement costs.
Yeah, one main thing is the difference between what your market value is, what you can sell a property for, and what the replacement cost is, what it is to rebuild it.
Right.
And rebuilding costs usually outstrip what the market value is going to be, especially if you've got older buildings, that can drastically affect it. But the engineers' office, I believe, the new engineers building, I believe we've got that on a builder's risk, don't we?
Yeah, I mean, it's our construction, yeah, you may, so there may be something.
It's, a builder's risk policy is, as a building is completed, the insurance amount on it goes up, that they're going to pay, but the rate is based on the total amount of the completed structure. So that building is going to be in these figures as well.
We have, you'll get some kind of schedule, the commissioners can see it with.
Yeah, absolutely, every line item, every traffic light, every, everything is listed out. I can bore you with more papers than you can imagine.
And then, you don't, they'll have an actual consolidated list of actually what the vehicles are, that they're in.
That are insured, the way, the way it works is, the shares department, for example, will report to us a new vehicle that they're getting, you know, a police enforcer, Tars, and then they'll say to us, it's going to have this package on it, A, B, C, or D, and each of those packages has a little more equipment, D has more equipment than A does, and C has more than A does, and so on. So those packages can add another twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars to the cost of the vehicle, depending on what's in that vehicle.
But then, are you, are you deducting the vehicle that they're auctioning off?
Yeah, that, those, at the end of the year, they make the total vehicle change, you're covered for all of the vehicles throughout the year. They don't send, like your personal car insurance, if you got a new car and traded your old one in last weekend, this weekend, you'd get an endorsement showing your new car on there, the old one off. Corsa runs it all at the same time, when the renewal comes in, you get a credit on the renewal for the cars that were turned in, and then you get charged on the new cars. So it doesn't affect, we're not asking you for another thousand dollars in premium here, a thousand dollars there, it's just an easier way of managing the premium.
Do you have it broke down by department, by each individual area, who?
They're broken, they're broken down by department as well.
We're the ones who supply that information to them. Debbie keeps the running total of what's on and what's off, in terms of vehicles we own. It probably can be sorted by department, and maybe you sort it by department when you get it, but we worked pretty tirelessly last fall to make sure that that thing was as accurate as we could make it. I think we went back and forth three times with you guys, to get it into the way you wanted it, and we were satisfied that it was accurate as of that moment, but as you know, things change, probably a lot has changed since six months ago.
That brings up an interesting question that I hadn't contemplated before. We're not allocating insurance costs across the departments, the general fund is just paying the insurance cost.
That's not entirely true. I just got a document from Corsa yesterday, it's on my Heidi list for today, where we do a little bit of cross.
The cost allocation, a maximum thing we're looking at, where we're able to charge other departments outside the general fund for insurance, we do.
And she and I will be talking about that today.
The shares department, for example, is that allocated to?
Well, that's, that's general fund, most of that's general fund. We'd be charging ourselves.
But people who have their own funding sources.
The engineer would be.
It's all about. I haven't been.
It can be now, I used to.
Last day.
Okay.
Of course, it gives a breakdown of the percentage that's allocated to each one of the departments that can be charged for, so it's just a simple matter of taking that percentage of the total and charging it off to the particular department. There were five categories on that, I don't say?
Something like that, I haven't drilled down yet. I'm just gonna sit down with Heidi today.
I guess, too, you know, sixty-eight new employees from fourteen to fifteen? I mean, most of the time, to be quite honest, within the commissioner's hiring, pretty much, somebody has to leave for another one to come in.
JFS has crept up a little bit, just because of all the workload they have.
Sixty-four people, that's.
No, not, yeah, that's mostly.
That's what surprised me with some of the increases here.
Yeah.
Until the ten million dollars, the magnitude of the increases was, raised questions, because it surprised me.
We just talked about part-time and full-time. Is that part-time?
Those are equivalents. Notice the payroll total went down.
Yeah.
So.
More people pay more.
Paying less.
I mean, when we bring summer help on, we gotta look at them, right?
Excuse me?
When the summer help numbers come on, they would fall under this part-time number.
But that's probably included in that number, part-time and seasonal, I would think, is still in.
Yeah, and so that fluctuates by, I don't know.
You'd be amazed how much it fluctuates. I mean, I pulled a report that was for eleven months of all the people that had left, because I was trying to update a different list, and it was like three pages. I was amazed at the amount of movement of employees that there were in and out, and, yeah. Part of the difference here may be that you have a different person doing the job.
Right.
Because I'm doing it differently than Colleen did, because I didn't have a lot of guidance how to do it.
Fresh set eyes, yeah.
So I had a lot of departments saying, nobody's ever asked me this before, I'm like.
So you're counting people now, where you didn't count people?
I'm not saying that, I'm just saying, if I'm doing it differently, you might get a slightly different result.
So let me ask you a Corsa question, then. Let's say hypothetically that we trimmed our fleet by twenty-five cars next month, and we paid this invoice, and so what does that do to our invoice? Is it an annual payment regardless of?
Yes.
What we?
That'll be adjusted the next year, your premium next year will be down to reflect that, if you did not replace those cars. If you trimmed twenty-five and added thirty, you're not going to be charged for the fact that there's twenty-five newer cars and five cars that never existed in the converse.
Yeah, we're paying for cars that aren't covered then.
Basically, it was trade-off, yes, you're correct.
But if you're growing, you're not paying for the adds until the month.
Yeah.
When we insure these vehicles, whether it's police cars, or the engineers' fleet, or resources, are these actual cash value or replacement cost numbers on this stuff?
The, all of the equipment is for replacement cost, to the best of my knowledge, even including the vehicles.
Yes, it is. We made sure of that.
Okay, yeah, 'cause I mean, in, in the engineers' department, I mean, you got a backhoe that's fifteen years old, twenty years old, it could be a couple hundred thousand dollars more to replace that if it caught fire and big engine fire, or whatever calamity happens.
Correct.
So we don't not only lose our piece of equipment, but then have to make up a difference to, to the twenty-fifteen or sixteen value.
The county's only commitment is there's twenty-five hundred dollar deductible on the loss, two thousand five hundred dollars.
On everything?
Correct.
Whether it's a car, a bulldozer, a dump truck, cloud truck?
Correct.
Lawsuit.
What's that?
Lawsuit.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
So let's see, just one, I'm sorry, one more question, my mind was working on this. You can blame Ralph, because he was the one that brought it up and started the whole thing. So what is the incremental difference on, on the ten million dollar increase? If you were to, just to guess off the top of your head, what the rate difference would be?
Um, well, let's see here. The increment, oh, you mean the?
How much more are we paying for that extra ten million dollars worth of value?
Oh, well, um, you're actually, you're actually not, because you're going down by thirty thousand this year as opposed to what you paid last year.
Right, but I think you're saying if we would have held at the same amount, if, let's say we would have had the one fifty-three this year, increasing that, that almost ten million dollars, how much would we really have been able to go down if we would have kept the number the same? If we were saving thirty grand, how much more could we have saved without that ten million dollar bump?
Um, well, the breakdown that I've got here does not allude to that. If it were all building coverage, instead of being across the board, building coverage is typically about thirty cents per hundred, so how many hundreds do you have in ten million?
My case.
No, no, give me a spreadsheet, I'll figure it out.
Thousand, ten thousand, there's ten thousand hundreds.
It would be thirty thousand dollars.
Ten thousand times thirty cents, three thousand dollars.
Three thousand may be on ten thousand, but thirty cents would be three million, or thirty thousand on ten million.
But that, how many hundreds are there in, in a million? Ten thousand, correct?
No, it would be a, it would be a hundred thousand.
Oh, look at me, I'll get my calculator.
One, two, three.
Thank you.
Ten thousand.
That's right.
So the rate is, is per hundred?
Per hundred.
So you have ten thousand hundreds, ten thousand times thirty cents is three thousand, three hundred thirty-three.
So, so then?
My guess is that if it were all property, three thousand dollars of this increase, or this premium, would be from the ten million in property.
And you're gonna provide them with a list of?
Yeah.
I'm just guessing, as Linda touched on, fresh set of eyes looking at this, and again, the whole idea is to accurately account for everything we have.
You know, it's not something, is, we're going through the budgeting process, and we're gonna be entering the budget season, many of us, myself included, don't contemplate, if the sheriff comes over and asks for five new cars, what the hit to the budget is gonna be from an insurance standpoint. I can look at the cost of the car, and whatever, but not really thinking in the back of my mind about the insurance impacts, because that comes out of the general fund.
Right.
Well, I think the key there is what you're, you're saying, if the sheriff comes over and asks for five new cars, or does the sheriff ask for five cars that he's replacing? I mean, I view five new adding to the total, to the total, where I want five new replacement vehicles, which means I'm taking five out of the fleet because of their mileage and longevity, if we're doing actual cash value, or not actual cash value, replacement costs, that should be a wash.
Right, but I mean, we had a ten million dollar increase, so therefore we had a, an impact to the budget, which.
Well, ten million dollars is on, is, well, actually nine million dollars, I think. We're gonna pick up a million to million and a half on the engineers' building now, now, the one that's, I gotta think that's fifty percent completed, I was in it the other day.
Yeah.
I gotta think it's close to fifty percent, then the salt thing, that's not even on here yet or anything.
I haven't even told them about that.
Yeah, that's, well.
Yeah, what's all building? Pay no attention to that, two hundred.
Right now, it's just a big mud hole, I just, I looked at that the other day, so they're ready. What other major things have we done?
Well, I, again, I think it's probably fresh set of eyes looking, this is probably just improving the accuracy of our current stock of assets, and we're part of a pool with all the other counties, we need to have it as accurate as possible. So, I mean, the good news is because of the overall loss control, we're paying less money. The bad news is maybe we're a little more accurate on the assets, and we didn't get as big of an increase as we might have had those all been accounted for maybe better in the past, but the idea is we're wanting to.
And I'm not saying they weren't, I'm just saying it may be a part of the reason.
Yeah.
Sure, but it's been a healthy, it's been a healthy conversation, unless there's any objection to the fee, I don't have.
Well, I think if, if we're, if we're looking at, if it's thirty cents a hundred, and there's.
If it were all building, that was the ten million.
Right, and if it was, if, so, so you're looking at three dollars every thousand.
Correct.
So we're looking at thirty dollars every thousand, or ten thousand.
Ten thousand.
So if you, if you do the math, it's thirty thousand dollars. I mean, let's do the math.
Yeah, thirty thousand dollars.
It's thirty thousand, it's not three thousand dollars.
Yeah, could have been our thirty thousand dollar reduction had you not gone.
I, I don't know where three thousand came from, but it's not three thousand, it's thirty thousand dollars.
One thing I would like to note is that in addition to a lower premium this year, we're getting some enhanced coverages. We have some disaster recovery type stuff, it's called business income extra expense limit, was a million, now it's gonna be two and a half million. The valuable papers limit, which means a lot to me as your records manager, went from a million to two and a half million. Employer's liability stopgap, and you might be able to explain that better than I can, has gone from one to three million in terms of our coverages.
Stopgap is just a, a coverage that comes in and fills in around workers' comp coverage if there's an incident of negligence on behalf of the employer that work comp would not pay for. An item, stopgap gives coverage for injury by, bodily injury by injury and by disease.
What about mental health? Because what we're seeing is there's a whole lot of, I just can't work, I'm just so traumatized, and that becomes a thing that goes on without end, it seems, like years and years, we're still paying, is that covered by this kind of stuff?
Is work comp paying for that?
Sometimes, sometimes not. Is that, would that fill in the gaps on something like that?
With, with any policy, the first thing to look at is the exclusions, I'd have to look at that. A lot of times work comp is excluded from, certain things are excluded from the work comp override, so I cannot answer that for you now.
Okay.
But I can look into it.
So anyway, we've got some enhanced coverages for back wages, front wages, and severance obligations, errors and omissions, if we make mistakes in unemployment action, we get some better coverage on that. And then our cyber liability coverage, that's something that Corser's paying a lot more attention to now, and I think you of all people would know for very good reason. In fact, I asked them if they could look at using that as the training for next year, I don't know if they will, but I thought, I'm sure they're gonna do FMLA, maybe next year they can do the cyber liability, because there's a lot to know, and there are so many opportunities for us to be damaged by outside people. I know that the auditor's office is working on prepping some training for people in this area this year, and I'm working with them on that, and we're gonna try and get some people in to be trained on how to be a little more careful about the exposures we have.
Is it just cybersecurity, or are you covering security generally speaking? I mean, generally, in the world of security, there's, there's bigger security leaks with stuff that walks out the door, paper and stuff that was in the office, somebody picks up and that kind of stuff than anybody could ever get on the internet, and people going out and, you know, loose lips sink ships kind of a thing. And so do you cover security across the board?
Well, it's, it's, I think if it were on a laptop that got stolen, or lost, or somehow misappropriated, not, not your briefcase.
Okay. Do you, I know you got, do you have any issues with this?
No, no.
Just to, to finish up, as Linda said, the loss control incentive program, that's
something that you folks, the county's gotten a hundred percent on last year. It had a credit of nine thousand two hundred and fifty-nine dollars, this year it was ten thousand three ninety-six. And the loss fund member equity, that is, it's a buildup. Each one of the counties that joins Corser pays an initial upfront administrative fee, joining fee if you will, of twenty-five thousand dollars. So twenty-five years ago, that's what the, the county paid, and each new county coming in pays that. The, the fund had sat there for the first several years and built up. Corser's kind of like a mutual insurance company. You know, a mutual insurance company is owned by shareholders, and mutual insurance companies pay dividends to those policy owners that basically own the company. Corser pays a dividend, has through the past, I think, seven, eight years, it's come back, and this year, it went up to forty-three thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars from the twenty-eight thousand nine forty-four that you got last year. And again, the Corser Board is made up of a board of county commissioners, such as yourself, that determine what's on that. They have an election each year to select that board with, among the Corser membership. You wanna run?
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna look at the, the mix of members there, because my, my experience with many of these boards is, we might be benefited by being on that board.
And we have someone on the board, so he was on that board, his career was in insurance, so he was a.
We don't have enough Geogga County commissioners to, to push back on some of the nonsense we see along these boards, so we're gonna have to increase the size of the.
We just need more commissioners.
Well, the, the end result is that the, all the factors going together, last year, you paid three hundred and seventy thousand five hundred and twelve dollars, and this year, the total premium is three, three hundred forty thousand two eighteen, which is a thirty thousand two hundred and ninety-four reduction, or seven percent. And, that's it. Respectfully request your approval.
Commissioner's office is requesting the board approve the county risk sharing authority and forfeited insurance program renewal for the period May first, two thousand fifteen through April thirty, two thousand sixteen, and further authorize the payment of three hundred and forty thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Is she real?
Aye.
Is she still there?
Aye.
Mr. Claypool.
Hi.
I don't have to actually print the formal one, have you guys sign it? I'll do that for, for a sec, but that's, I copy it.
We're passing this today, or?
I have it on there, I forgot to run that.
We can get it. Read it.
The commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and execute resolution number fifteen dash zero five two honoring Rotary Club of Chardons on their fiftieth anniversary celebration.
I'll make that motion again.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Stedler?
Aye.
Mr. Claypool?
Aye, and I'm gonna read this, I know Ralph said there's another meeting, so, thank you. All right, the resolution honoring the Rotary Club of Chardons on their fiftieth anniversary celebration, that's pretty significant, fifty years. I'm only slightly older than that. Whereas in February nineteen oh five, Paul B. Harris originated the idea, and the first Rotary Club meeting was held in Chicago, and the member of the club, clubs quickly grew across the coun, country. In nineteen twelve, the name was changed to Rotary International to reflect the clubs in other countries, and by July nineteen twenty-five, there were more than two thousand clubs across six continents, all with the same idea of dedication to serving their communities, best expressed in the motto, service above self, end. Whereas in the summer of nineteen sixty-four, these individuals looked into the formation of the Chardons-based Rotary Service Club that would meet during lunch hour, contacts were made through the very existing Burton Club and the guidelines to establish the new club will reach, the Rotary Club of Chardons was granted a charter on February fifteenth, nineteen sixty-five. And whereas the Rotary Club of Chardons immediately began holding social events, fundraisers, selling maple syrup at the Maple Festival, and then food items at the county fair, as a way to raise funds so that they could support the community, which continues today to provide college scholarships, books, dictionaries to local schools, students exchange, and an annual fireworks display. And whereas the Rotary Club of Chardons service goes beyond the boundaries of Geogga County throughout their support of the polio research program to eradicate polio in the hospital, Albert Schweitzer and Haiti, in which they assist with providing much-needed medical supplies, and now therefore be it resolved that the Geogga County Board of Commissioners do hereby recognize and honor the Rotary Club of Chardons on their fiftieth anniversary celebration, and for their commitment and dedication to serving the residents in their community throughout the world. We have further resolved that this resolution becomes part of the permanent record of the Board of Commissioners of Geogga County. Thank you for the, for the Chardons Rotary, this is phenomenal, so thank you. Is somebody here from the Chardons Rotary? Well, it'll be on YouTube.
Yes, it will.
Okay, up and coming meetings, Tuesday the twenty-first, the first, we're gonna have a NACAG meeting at ten thirty?
Yeah.
The twenty-third, the commissioners are gonna hold regular session at six thirty, the twenty-third to the twenty-sixth, nobody wants to miss the Maple Fest in Chardon Square, get some maple butter, maple syrup, pancakes, have a ride, ride the rides, have a good time. The twenty-eighth, the commissioners are gonna hold regular session, the twenty-eighth, we're gonna go to the Portage Geogga Juvenile Detention Center, a fun and exciting trip. On the fifth, the commissioners are gonna hold regular session, on the eighth, NOACA, my favorite organization, we're gonna have a finance, governance, and executive committee, all of which, I think Blake sits on. The twelfth, the commissioners.
It's not on finance.
Oh, that's right.
We don't have any finance.
We don't have any finance, they don't allow us on the finance committee. The commissioners call regular session at nine o'clock, and that'll include an updated presentation by the elite Geogga Recovery Centers. With that said, I'm going to go adjourn. Outstanding.
Thank you for coming.